...before the accreditation process starts at the end of the month for the Health Department. And they have three topics they want to talk about this evening with you all. And Mr. Tarte has prepared a presentation regarding each of the three topics that are very, very relevant, I think, to what we're dealing with today in Union County. So without further ado, I'll let Mr. Tarte go ahead and get started on it.
Thank you. The first item we had, and we're at the same time for enterovirus and Ebola conversation, was the reduction in the dental fees. What we presented to you was a reduction in an initial visit within the dental clinic. In consultation with our current dentist, we met and looked at some of the numbers as far as clinic flow, those individuals that might or might not visit, those that don't have a medical home for dental. In the conversations, we talked about potentially reducing that initial visit to get them in the door. That has become somewhat of an impediment to getting a client in to start with so we can proceed with other services. One of the items we did talk about was her clinic schedule and the way we set that up in dental is there are various columns for dental, for hygiene, and for other assisting duties. What we would like to do is be able to reduce that in order to get that individual in that clinic to do other duties such as fillings, extractions, those necessary dental procedures that are necessary for the client's well-being. What we'd like to do is try this for a period of time and see if this impacts the numbers of folks coming into the dental clinic. We ran some of those clinic numbers. We did not feel that it would be an impediment. What we did also is take some of our client data. We did one at the expo. We also have done others in the community. And one of the largest issues they have talked, number one, they said they would use us as a dental home, but the other one was cost of an initial assessment being an impediment to dental services. That does not impact the fees that we do for other dental services throughout. It's just that initial gets you in. If you notice, some dentist offices actually will do a free initial exam. We don't have the luxury to change fees out of whim. We have to bring them before the board. What we thought is we wouldn't reduce them to zero, but we would at least reduce them to a fee that we thought was comparable to the community rate and leave our other dental fees where they stand. Those two fees, you see originally our fee on that is $128. It's $48 for the fee, $80 for the x-rays. We would reduce that to a $65 initial visit, and that would bring that total 65. In addition, we propose to also reduce a limited exam fee from 40 to 25. This goes along as well with someone that comes in that has a single spot in their mouth that they want to have us examine. Could be a single tooth, it could be a single area of the mouth. It's not a full-blown exam. Right now, those exams for the four quadrants are the same. And in consultation with the dentist, she said practically, in practicality in her office and private practice, they would do different procedural codes for different areas of the mouth thereby reducing that fee. So the two fees we have for you are to take the $48 for initial exam, $80 for the complete film series, and $40 for the limited exam, and drop those fees to the proposed fees you see on the right within our fee schedule.
And you said you talked with the dentist and this has been successful?
Yeah, she has. And we found a lot of dentist offices will do that. They'll do a free initial exam. That free initial exam gets someone at least in the chair so you can do an assessment.
So this $63 difference roughly, is that what I'm seeing?
That's correct.
And where is that going to be absorbed at? Does it make up the difference?
We make up the difference on them spending money on the various procedures. What we find is on the back end, if someone has a dental problem, they're prolonging that dental problem, spending that money because they've spent it on the front end. That's probably a 50% of the complaints that we get or issues we get, they postpone an appointment because they don't have money for that, they've already spent it on that front end. So they're going to be spending it on the back end with those particular fillings, with those extractions, with those various root canals, et cetera. So we're hoping we can fill up on the back end in the dental column to make up the difference. We do run through dental columns for procedures. We feel that more time can be spent on that backside with people spending their time and energy and serving the client for the necessary dental procedures they need. Based on our numbers, if I'm correct, I think it was, that initial exam was somewhere around in the $3,000 range for the year difference in getting them in.
You said that other dentists are offering the same services?
We have some, we have dentists that will occasionally, that will offer a free initial exam. What we didn't want to do is offer an initial exam for free because what happens is someone might come in for a free exam and there's no ownership of that exam, and then they've spent time and energy in the clinic, maybe 45 minutes to an hour, doing x-rays and exams. If there is a fee with that, then they are more likely to come back for that service.
So why would we not refer a client someplace to get a free exam versus bringing them in there, us absorbing the cost, hoping to make it up on the back end?
You could refer, you could refer, and we do refer, but you're referring out folks that either have no payer source or they're on Medicaid, and you don't have providers that are willing to take Medicaid client or no pay, or a no insured client. So there's not, there are more Medicaid providers in the community that we see now, but we're not seeing them that are taking those clients. And they have, we do referral sources. If they don't want to see our services, we give them a list of other Medicaid providers in the community and the three counties surrounding area, but we don't have anyone that's doing any care cash for service.
But it's a free exam?
It is a free, there are some free exams. I don't, I'm not saying they all do free exams, but you will see an occasional dentist that will do a free exam. We're not going to do a, we don't want to do a free exam. We don't want to do a free exam. We can't absorb that free exam. Now, I will say this, there are dental providers within the community that do some free dental exams. It just depends, will they take that particular coverage? If it's a Medicaid carrier, they don't accept, if it's a Medicaid client, they don't take Medicaid, they're not going to sit them in that chair for dental services. They're going to do a prerequisite first on their insurance. But I don't know of right now any cash-for-service dentist in the community. I don't know of any. I'm not saying there aren't any, but in our last assessment, I didn't see any. What we'd like to do is just at least try this for a period of time and see how the numbers run. It's more of an incentive.
I guess that's where I'm struggling, is why do I want to incentivize somebody to come to us for a reduced fee if you're saying there are places they can go in the county and pay the private enterprise folks?
There are private enterprise individuals in dental world that do, that will provide a free medical exam upfront. It just depends on whether they will take that insurance because what we've become, if we have a high Medicaid percentage of individuals and we have a high private pay individual. Now, if they were carrying, and we have accepted, we have adopted some other insurance carriers, but if they're carrying a Cigna or an Aetna or Blue Cross, they might be more likely to be a provider of that service. All providers don't necessarily take Medicaid. So I guess we're safety net providers, what I'm saying. We certainly, I'm just asking that we reduce them if it's not the intent, if the board doesn't want to, we can certainly leave them where they are.
If I can't speak with the board, I'm just asking some questions here.
Sure.
I mean, is our dental resources, are we just not utilizing them? Are we trying to build a client base? What's the goal here?
For this particular service, the goal is to ensure that we don't have people that are refusing service or not seeking service because of an initial investment on an initial exam. Therefore, we can treat them for the other causes of dental decay and dental issues that they're having on the back end. They can spend their resources fixing their teeth versus doing an initial exam. And if I can, we can get them in the chair, the dentist can do a full assessment. We think we can make those dollars up with that assessment on the back end, doing the dental procedures that are necessary for their dental care.
Mr. Chairman, we're also taking other steps to increase the volume within the dental clinic. We have expanded our insurance base, Mr. Tarte mentioned. We also have received funding from Charlotte Mecklenburg for HIV-positive individuals to come for our clinic, and we have just started accepting appointments for that as well. The idea is, our dental clinic has been historically underutilized, and we're trying different means to make sure it becomes more fully utilized.
So it's underutilized because they're not seeking dental care? It's not underutilized because of the cost? Or they are not seeking dental care because of the cost?
There's probably multiple, there's multiple issues. I think part of it's marketing, and we're trying to increase our client base that way. Part of it's insurance, we did not take, we only took like one or two insurances before last year. Now we've expanded our insurance company base, okay? There's a number of reasons why it was not utilized to its potential. We are taking steps to address that issue this year.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions.
I think you'll find in the recession, when the recession hit dental, as far as medical care, dental took the largest hit that we found within the medical realm of individuals seeking service. So it's just trying to rebound from that.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
And I don't know if I would not begin to put words in the chairman's mouth or try to interpret his thoughts with it, but I reckon what I'm sensing a concern is, I don't think we need to be undercutting private providers. And so if what we are offering is not necessarily a competition with private providers, but simply offering a service that otherwise would not be utilized, then I don't have a problem supporting. But now what I don't want is to create a situation where we're competing with private providers and undercutting their pricing. So I reckon, is the client that we're looking to help in this situation, is this someone that would simply probably not go to a private provider and this would be the only option that they would consider for this care?
It is. I classify us, when we originally started that, it was a safety net provision of care. We are not in the provision of competing for dental services. Our intent was for the private pay and the Medicaid. Medicaid had very little provision of care in the community with dental services. That has picked up a little bit the past three or four years. As far as the private pay individuals, they don't. So no, our intent is not to compete. Our intent is to ensure that those individuals do seek dental care before other issues occur with them medically.
So just so that I understand, the way I can interpret it is you have a block of individuals in the community that are going to private care, and then there's another block that aren't seeking care either because they don't have an option in the private market or they can't afford the initial upfront costs. And so what we're doing is, we're not, the private care is still going to have that block of clientele. We're just increasing the citizenry that's actually seeking dental care or giving dental care. Is that, am I right?
Right, and I can't, and that's correct. And see, and I can't say that if you have this particular insurance or if you're private pay, you're charged this much, and if you're with Medicaid charges. I have to do it across the board regardless.
Sure.
But yes, those are the clients we're seeking to capture before other issues arise, and that's why I go back and say we're a safety net provider. Our intent, no, our intent is not to compete. Our intent is to fill a hole and a gap of service provision for folks seeking dental services. If the private provider can provide a dental services that we can't, we refer them out. If they provide services and they want to have freedom of choice and go to that individual, absolutely. If they accept a Medicaid, absolutely. We just fill that niche where others don't, and that's what we're looking today.
And you feel like if the initial fee is reduced, we're going to be able to absorb the cost through the downstream revenue?
Downstream, it is a downstream. I mean, we find that we put, I mean, you get on payment plans, you get on situations where folks can't afford that initial exam, and they say, "I'm not coming." And this was something that my dentist came to me and we talked about at length, that she has seen in her own private practice, that she has seen with some of her provision, providers, colleagues, that they have done, and frankly, it very well probably shouldn't have been as high as it was to start with. That's the risk you run with setting a fee, and then you want to back it down. Sometimes it becomes, you back it down and it looks extreme.
And you probably, I don't mean to put you on the spot, so if you don't know, that's fine, but do we know, do we have any numbers or any figures that says how many visits they would have to come to offset the difference? Or if they come back maybe once, that's offsetting it?
I don't know how many. We did, we did run just a couple scenarios on particular procedure codes, but it was very minimal.
Do we have anything to substantiate that people are not coming to get dental care because of the cost?
I can provide you that, yes. 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 They've been logging those, they've been logging those issues of folks not coming as well as doing surveys of clients to determine why they're not seeking additional services or why they're not seeking services. And we've just done too recently on two outreach clinics as to why they wouldn't seek service.
I reckon my concern is, is the block of funds that we have available. I don't want to, by reducing the fee here, therefore increases the strain on the block of funding that we have that might take away funding from more, not that dental care is not important, but I don't want it to take away from other services that are maybe more viable. If that's, so if that would be my only concern, so am I correct in saying that there's not a concern among management?
It's not a concern for her, it's not a concern for me. And I think our agreement was that we would assess it on a two-month basis through the end of the fiscal year to see if there was any impactful difference in her column of service.
And I reckon that's probably, if the board decides to go this route, there needs to be some sort of kind of a catch-up date or check-up date in six months, 12 months. Have we actually increased?
We could do a follow-up on these particular procedure codes and how they've impacted the bottom line and that revenue.
I think that's the only way I'm going to be comfortable with it, is if there's a set period of time, 60 days would be fine, to try to see if it does lead to increased level of service. Aside from that, I'm just not comfortable with it. I need more information.
Is there a requirement or need before these patients are accepted and not referred to general dentistry or, you know?
There's, we only, but we only handle very basic dental procedures. We don't do anything fancy, you know? If anything is more complex, we do refer off. You know, this is the, for they get their good basic care, you know, with fillings, extractions, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm sure. It's a full medical clinic.
Oh, I was, my comment is that I'm going to assume you guys have done your homework, and we've made an investment in the dental clinic. There's nothing worse than a kid or somebody that continues to agonize with a tooth issue, and it becomes full-blown into infection or something like that down the road because they don't have the money or don't want to invest in the process. So I certainly think we need to go back and take a look at it down the road a little bit to see how we're doing, but I'm going to have confidence in you guys and move that we accept the fees as presented.
And if I could amend the motion, I think we had a timeframe on to that, and I'll defer. Philip and Richard, is there a timeframe that gives you the time to allow, or you got, we have to notify the clients that it's available? So there has to be some form of timeframe for that, and then some measurable timeframe to gather enough to see if the changes we've made is substantiated. Would you?
We could do it through this quarter. We could do it a 90-day period and see how we run for a 90-day period. That'd give us a true representation of what we're looking at.
So I'll amend Vice Chair's motion at a 90-day review period.
Flip that?
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both of them?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, two items for discussion that I just want to briefly talk about, and thank you for, Farmer, Waltons, and Emergency Managers for being here. We've had quite a good partnership opportunity over the last month to talk about these two issues, particularly Ebola. Let me quickly run through the enterovirus and D68 version and tell you, these are two particular strains of viral viruses that are running through the country at this point, both of which are causing issues. It's one more prevalent than the other in this country, but we'll talk about these. And please ask questions if you would like. The enterovirus situation that we have, the EB D68, this presented to us in mid-August in this country, and it has been associated with respiratory illness outbreaks around the country. We had our first confirmed case on September 27th of 2014. Now, as of the 15th of this month, 691 people from 46 states and District Columbia were confirmed to have EB D68. It's actually been detected in specimens from five patients who died. Just a quick background on enterovirus, they're very common. What we've told folks is there are over 100 types of enteroviruses currently identified. Some are very serious. Obviously, this one is one of those serious conditions. We tend to see enteroviruses pop up in the summer and the fall. D68 is more common this time of year than it is in any other time of year. And I will tell you that outbreaks we have seen over the past 20 years I've been in public health tend to occur in a several-year cycle. They come and they go. Just some clinical features, just to let you know, it was identified in California in '62. It's almost exclusively associated with a respiratory disease, and I will tell you, based on infectious disease documentation, this illness is not well-defined at this It is identified with increased frequency during recent years, and those are what we call clusters. And we look for clusters of individuals that have the same signs and symptoms of illness for any particular timeframe. Are we identifying these increased frequencies because of improved diagnostics or emergence of this particular pathogen? We can't answer that. We hope our diagnostics are improving through the years. You'll find with a lot of diseases, numbers tend to rise. We hope that it's improved diagnosis and not just emergence of that particular pathogen. Quick clinical feature on that, in 2000, in September, CDC issued a health advisory. And when they issued that advisory, they described a cluster of non-pediatric patients that had presented with hospitalization. And they had acute neurological illness. In other words, they were having some nerve damage on one part of that particular body, but they didn't know what they were looking at. I will tell you, the illness is characterized by limb weakness and abnormalities in spinal cord gray matter. Just so you know, this particular virus, as well as a non-Paleo enterovirus, Polio is a type of an enterovirus. Four of the patients were typed as EB D68 on that initial assessment. Most hospital commercial labs cannot perform enterovirus testing. We can't do it. I don't know of a lab locally that can do that. The gold standard for testing is sequencing those structural genes. We don't have the capability to do that. What we do at that point is hospitals, physicians' offices will submit those to the state lab. We would coordinate that if we had to, for submission to the CDC. CDC tests for this particular virus. What we ask, since we're taping, is that providers should contact the local health department or the communal disease branch, and they have that information prior to submitting. We ask that they not submit testing samples prior to contacting. As far as treatment, there is no specific treatment for EB D68, and there are no vaccines. I have told, we have had conversations with the schools, particularly with parents and with those clusters of individuals. Most infections are mild. Can we say with accuracy that disinfection won't hurt you and it hurts someone else? No, but we do know that most infections are mild and they only require symptomatic treatment. I will say too, that asthmatics are at risk for more severe illness because of that respiratory illness that they already have. The respiratory illness that this causes adds fuel to that fire. What we ask is that they experience exacerbation to seek care immediately, irregardless of whether it's EB D68, D68, that they seek care immediately. We also ask that asthmatics as well have a care plan in place with their physicians to know how to react should something like this happen. Recommendations, I think we've seen this in a lot of situations and a lot of diseases. I can't tell you enough how much we encourage people to wash their hands or soak in water. And if you go outside and you wash your hands, count how long it takes you for 20 seconds. I guarantee you, most people will take four or five seconds and they're done. It is about a 20-second ordeal, ordeal, time to wash your hands in order to effectively remove these viruses. We ask that kids and adults avoid touching eyes, nose, and mouth, obviously avoiding kissing and hugging and sharing with people you know that are sick. Disinfection frequently for touch services such as doorknobs and toys. I don't think I have it on the other slide, but this is a non-encapsulated type virus. Therefore, what we found is a Clorox solution works well. And more importantly, we ask that people stay home when they're sick. This goes out on all of our correspondence, if we have to talk about this particular virus. Lastly, it is a contact and droplet isolation. In other words, it's the same thing we're looking at right now for Ebola. A contact and droplet isolation. And I know a lot of folks use alcohol-based rubs. It is evidence-based found that this is not effective against EB D68, so it's hand washing. We've asked just for your information with providers in the community. We send this information out through our Code Red system. We ask providers in the community if they identify clusters of unusual activity and illness, that they should contact us. And any patients, we've told them under 20 years of age, who have a limb weakness after August 1st or an MRI showing a spinal cord lesion, should contact the local health department. Therefore, we can provide them with the information that they need. So that's a little bit about EB D68. It's still present in this country. It's still prevalent within those individuals less than 21 years of age, and anywhere you have a mass gathering, schools are a prime example, church groups, anywhere you have kids, you have the opportunity for a disease spread in situations like this. So we ask that people just take every precaution that they can. We have had some deaths from this. All right, Ebola, and again, thank you for being here. We won't get into the Ebola situation as far as what it is. I think you've heard a lot about it already on the news, if you haven't already looked at it online, but we know it's a deadly disease. And we know there are five particular strains of Ebola that we know cause diseases in humans. And we also know that Ebola was first discovered back in 1976, and it has not disappeared since. If you review CDC's website, you will find the Ebola outbreaks from 1976. I think there are roughly 25, 26 various outbreaks that have happened since then, somewhere in that range, each one of those having a different severity. Right now, they, CDC or health organization, really don't know what the natural reservoir host of Ebola is. However, on the basis of similar viruses, they believe it is animal-borne, and most likely as a result coming from bats. So as of October 15th, 2014, they've had 8,997 cases worldwide. These are pulled latest date from CDC. Laboratory confirmed cases with 5,006, with a total death count of 4,493. Now, when I say total cases, those are individuals who have no laboratory confirmation, but they might be showing signs and symptoms of a disease. They might be febrile, they might have come in contact with somebody, they might have other particular issues that we would be looking for. But as right now, we have a 4,493 total death count. Just to give you a quick overview of the 2014 case counts, these particular deaths are countries with widespread transmission, and those are those three countries in Africa, Guinea, Liberia, and Sierra Leone. The countries with travel-associated cases in Senegal and Spain, as well as the United States. The US case count, right now, we've had three total cases with three laboratory confirmed and one death. All of those confirmation, or all of those contacts coming from our Texas case. So let's talk a little bit about the collaborative effort that we have here in the community. Let's focus on this for a minute. So public health, emergency management, CMC Union have ongoing dialogue regarding this situation with Ebola. I will tell you, this, it is certainly a challenging time, but I think we do have a fantastic medical system to include EM, to include public health, to include the healthcare system in this community. And I really feel good about our current plans that we're putting together and have put together. The collaboration also includes the state public health and the CDC. Throughout the process, as we talk about this, email and no email and other notifications, including our Code Red system, which is our emergency contact system, is constantly being utilized to send updated information, to send updates to local hospital systems, local EM, anyone that might come in contact with an with an Ebola client. And we just had a great conversation about our mortuaries as well. We actually have notifications for them. If you arrive at the health, the health department, right now, we have an algorithm, or at least a checklist, as to how we're going to triage an individual that appears. Upon arrival, we want to know, have you traveled to Dallas? And this was as, as of yesterday, or internationally in the past month. We want to ask some other questions. If no, go to, go to window one. If yes, proceed here. So we want to make sure that anyone presenting in that clinic at least is screened in or screened out. If they meet a threshold of, if they meet a threshold of any of these particulars where they're running a fever, or they've been to Africa, then we're going to screen them on where we're going to have our communal disease nurse going to talk to that individual.
Philip, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I'm probably getting too far ahead.
Sure.
In terms of our staff and making sure that they're, have they had the proper training? Or is that in the works to make sure that they're properly trained since there is a likelihood of them dealing, not necessarily Ebola, but other communicable diseases that are kind of running rampant right now? How, do they have the protocol necessary to keep them safe?
What we do is we follow, as we would with any other droplet precautionary-type disease, is we follow the CDC recommendations. I brought those tonight as a matter of fact. We give them, for this particular situation, they're trained on surgical aprons, they're trained on glove, putting on gloves and removal of gloves, whether it be booties, N95s, or surgical masks. They're all trained through our readiness and preparedness. We fit tests every year to ensure that, and they do continuing education training for that. We had the opportunity to meet with the hospital system. We had the opportunity to meet with the hospital system and talk about some of that protocol. And I will tell you, CMC did provide us two, were they level, what level was that now? They were self-contained units.
Self-contained, I don't remember what level.
They, they were self-contained units. I'm assuming they were level one at that point. Self-contained, almost a SCUBA unit at that point. But yes, they are trained, they are prepared for a droplet-isolation kind of situation.
And I reckon the second part of that question is, in addition to the staff, I'm assuming there is also a procedure for other clients that may have come in contact with an individual that is potentially contagious?
That, that is correct. There is, what we would do at that point is we would isolate that individual. If they happen to be meeting one of those risk factors, that individual is isolated by themselves. And at that point, we would determine that contact list based on where they were in that clinic. We still firmly stand by, and I will say this, I think CDC and World Health Organization have a 40-year history with this particular disease. That protocol hasn't changed as far as how it's spread. So we're still, we're still utilizing the droplet contact method of disease prevention. So at the point that they come in and they have not made contact, or they have, you know, they are not particularly exposing anyone to blood and body fluids, we're going to treat them just like we would anyone, anyone else. We will be, we are cleaning surfaces routinely, and we would have a specific room to put them in until such time we could transport them, yeah. Now, I will tell you, our rooms are not negative pressure. It's like the hospital would have a separate negative pressure situation. For this particular contagion, I don't think negative pressure would do us any good. But for future reference, we did get two portable negative pressure units. But right now, it's finding particular parts for those. It'd be, it'd be a problem. And I don't think we're going to need those at this point. If we should, I do have a price list for those, but should we need those in the future, we've got those priced out. But now, I think based in, and I think based on our conversations, we were still using droplet precaution at this point, and we were using the Level 3 PPE. Yeah. But they are, they're, they're all trained on that Level 2, Level 3 PPE precaution. So that's the particular checklist that we would go through. Yes, sir?
Your checklist?
Yes, sir.
Does by chance EMS have a similar checklist, transporting patient in that might have these symptoms?
Yeah, we have discussed that. There is a check, there is actually a protocol that is being prepared as we speak for EMS transport and EMS cleanup for those facilities. We discussed that on Friday at our, in our conference call. The state is actually helping with that one. DHHS is putting together a protocol in conjunction with state EMS to do that. I know it's hard to read, but this is a typical algorithm that we would be using within our facility. They've talked about if they're febrile, or if they're not, if they travel, are they high-risk, low-risk, or no non-exposure? So some of the key activities that have taken place within our county, within the state. Right now, we and other health departments are partnering with the North Carolina Poison Control Center. North Carolina Poison Control Center is actually taking the Ebola calls for the state of North Carolina. Poison Control Center's in Charlotte. And they went live on October 13th. We are constantly providing provider guidance, update, dissemination of information. Just as fast as we get it, we disseminate that out to our local providers within the community, including the hospital systems. We are providing ongoing public health consultation to clinicians wherever they suspect a possibly Ebola. Their number, our number is on their desk should they receive a suspect case. We want them to contact us and let's triage that, unless they call the hospital first. But we have worked with the hospital, determined if we get that call, we triage to ensure that they are or are not a high-risk subject. Right now, we've established our isolation and quarantine guidelines. And if you remember, when we talked about public health overview, we have the authority to actually isolate, quarantine an individual for a period of time based on a disease prevalence. And we certainly have a isolation and quarantine authority to do that. And we have a standard Ebola quarantine letter that's ready to go for that. We have teams in place for contact tracing. In other words, if someone is a suspect and we need to go and pay a visit to that home to determine if someone else is a high-risk factor, that's contact tracing. We have teams that are available to do that and go to the home. We were just talking about the fatality management for funeral home directors. That is actually posted on the Department of Public Health's website. We received that notification, I think, on Friday, as far as that's concerned. And I will make sure, if that didn't go out on Friday, I'll make sure that it goes out. But that should have been posted out. And it's actually, those, some of these are actually sent to providers and mortuaries and mass fatality groups at the same time we get them. We don't mind duplicating that effort to make sure it gets out there. DHHS is currently working within, or on plans for handling waste in the medical setting and decontamination in the non-medical setting, particularly the home. We did receive notification today that disposal of blood and body fluids in the medical waste by sanitary sewer systems is perfectly fine. So there's no fear within the public, the public works areas of sewer system. Most medical waste or other diseases are flushed routinely. And with the cleaning, the UV lighting, the chloridation, the chloramines, they feel that satisfactory to deter that virus from going anywhere else, much like any other viruses that are out there. A community outreach team's been established and developing outreach messages. And this is actually coming from the state. They're actually doing, targeting West African communities in North Carolina for any of those that either have visited or in the process or having family come into their particular area. Some other key activities, we've notified, we've contacted and notified our local college systems within Union County. And there are weekly phone briefings that started just today with North Carolina colleges and universities from, from DPH. DPH started that this afternoon, and they will continue that until such time as the thread has gone. The public lab, I wanted to mention our contact, our communication with the lab. The laboratory public health will do testing for Ebola, and they've completed the necessary risk protocol that they have to do. Currently, we are participating in Union County with the State Lab of Category A Packaging Guidelines. I think we determined that we probably wouldn't be packaging materials, but we want to at least be the contact should they need help in communication on how they might do that. You cannot ship these materials unless you are certified to do so. And I do want to let folks know too, that instantaneous testing results, they're non-existent. Should they get a large amount of blood to test at the state lineup, it could take some time to get that back. For EMS, and I use that, I use that largely thinking about emergency management. There have been developed triage and treatment protocols for suspects, for suspected patients beginning with 911 center call centers for transport to hospitals. That has taken place. And there has been a developed guidance for proper use of PPE for those emergency responders. It's the cleaning protocols that we're still waiting on for that. But they have, they have not developed as of yesterday or this afternoon, protocols for disposing waste on the scene of an ambulance cleaning. So that's what we're waiting on. Help on that. Can you think of anything else on that one that we've, that we had a discussion?
No, and as we're receiving these protocols, those are being updated. We're pushing those out to the involved groups, trying to keep them informed as they're updated. Philip actually has a staff person that checks CDC website daily to see if there's any additional updates.
I want to reiterate this. Smallpox and SARS back in 2000, 2003, 2004, the legislature expanded their isolation and quarantine authority for the local government and for state government in order to increase the time period where you, where you could contain someone. That was moved to 30 days. We do know that we have a potential incubation period on Ebola for a 21-day period. We have seen some go as early as eight days, but on average, we're looking at a 21-day period. Right now, they extended it to 30 days, and they allow for quarantine of buildings as well. So if it happened to be an entire facility, you can isolate, quarantine that entire facility. There also been an increased access to health records to investigate significant public health threats. So there is power that is vested to actually receive those health records in light of a, of a public health emergency. I know that was quick, but just so you know, that's where we are in Union County as far as our activities.
Philip, I think the information you gave us was great. And there are, I'm sure, I know there's people in my, in my household, especially my wife, that's concerned about this stuff, and there's citizens all over. And sure, there's getting a lot of information from the news, and they're getting a lot of information from CDC website. But I think it's important that citizens of Union County know that we are, as a county, are proactively preparing, preparing for the worst with the plans to never have to be there. I think it would be very beneficial, because as I said, this presentation was very informative to me and it will be informative to others, if there's a way, maybe the, both of the conditions you mentioned, the 68, I think it was, as well as the Ebola, that segment, somehow put it in a YouTube or somehow put it, so we can put it on the county site, Facebook, and let folks see that and make sure that the citizenry knows that we are actively preparing for this just in the event that it does come here. So if there's some way, I don't know who to direct that to, but if we can do that, that would be great. Thank you so much. And I appreciate the efforts that y'all have made.
Thank you. And we're updating the website as, as we speak, as of this afternoon, of what's out there.
And I don't know how easy it is, but should we have a dedicated site toward that? A subsite of the county health department site, kind of focusing on those?
We have a preparedness tab.
Okay.
That we're going to put that under. We might be able, we might have worked with, with Brett to put that into.
I understand there's a lot of fear going around, and, and I think if, I think education's the key to it, to know how to handle things, to know that we're, we are on top of it and that everybody's going to be okay.
I think from public health's perspective, you have a very, again, obviously, you have a very robust healthcare system in the country. I think you have, obviously, the best public health system anywhere in the world within the United States. They plan, they prepare for these situations. Can you stop everything? It's hard to do, but it's, it doesn't hurt to prepare and plan. And I think we've done a good job in preparing and planning. I think our partnerships throughout the county government have been fantastic, particularly outside, school systems, college systems, the hospital. It's a matter of getting ahead. What are we going to do collectively as a unit before it gets here? And I think we've, we certainly have worked on that over the years, and I appreciate, I appreciate the kind words.
And we can come up with words. Pretty prominent on the front page of our website.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Is that it? All in favor?
Aye.